Homeless shelters. As you know, this happens both in Bangor and in Portland, and it's been quite controversial lately. The fact is, it's been going on for a long time, and honestly, it's never been the right funding mechanism for homeless shelters. But it is one of the only funding mechanisms for homeless shelters that there is. There is a grand total of $380,000 in state general fund dollars that goes to support the work of 42 shelters spread around the state of Maine. 380,000 of 42 shelters. So, some shelters have relied on GA to help keep their doors open, and almost all of those 42 shelters have also relied on home funds through Maine Housing at their discretion. I would say neither home funds nor general assistance funds were established or are meant to fund emergency shelters. Honestly, they're practically all we've got. I would encourage you to explore creating a new fund, State of Maine Compassion Fund, to support the life-saving work of emergency shelters all over the state in a thoughtful, planful way. Let's get rid of GA funding as a source for shelters. Let's get rid of home funds as a source of funding for shelters. But let's do it thoughtfully and planfully and provide support through this new compassion fund. Let's make good, sound, public policy decisions acknowledging we can do things better, but let's not forget our obligation to keep people alive. That's really what's at stake here. That's the work of these emergency shelters all over Maine. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Altino.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. On the 3,4,461 soup kitchen meal, what I'm wondering, do you serve more than one meal a day?
Yeah, that's three meals.
That's three, okay, so that's three meals a day.
This one's a day.
And obviously, I would assume you're open 365 days out of the year.
We are no snow days for us.
No snow days, okay, thank you.
Representative Torrey.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here, Mark. Could you just very quickly, I know we're running late, but I know people are interested in understanding the whole issue of, well, I was driving to work the other day, and I saw a guy standing on the road looking for money, and he had a sign that said, "I'm one of the Preble Street Millionaires." And I'd really like to just to talk a little bit about that, so people, I hope they understand the difference between getting GA assistance and getting a room for the night, and how those, or a room, a pad for the night, and how those two things are different, and maybe how that, you know, maybe just talking quickly about that.
I can try. Well, a couple things. One is, you know, in the audit of the city shelter, I don't know exactly the 30 people that they looked at as long-stayers, of which I think they found 13 had money in the bank. I'm not sure exactly who those are, but we know right now who the 30 long-stayers are. We know who they are, and I'm sure it's a very comparable group. Thirty out of 30, 100% of those people are seriously tragically mentally ill, with untreated mental illness, or surviving on the streets. Anybody who works, lives, or visits Portland knows who I'm talking about. It's people who are wandering our streets, psychotic, delusional, acting out. That's who we're talking about. Many of them don't know they have money. They don't have access to that money, or they're not sure how to use it. Their functioning level is so low that they're staying on floors in soup kitchens five inches from the strangers on each side. So, the idea that somebody's getting away with something and trying to save money by staying in those awful shelters and eating in our soup kitchens is just, it's ridiculous, is what it is. I'm not sure if that answered your question.
That does, thank you. Senator Haskell.
Thank you. Some of the numbers that we've seen, I see this line, some of the numbers that we've seen from GA have to do with asylum seekers and new immigrants, new natives. What's the population in the shelters as a percentage that you would assume has been made or not?
It's grown dramatically over the time. I've been at Preble Street 24 years, and there was a time it would be an absolute, you know, surprise if there were more than a half dozen people of color in our soup kitchen or in our shelter. Now, it's probably a third. If you walk through our soup kitchen, it's probably more than a third, actually. I don't know, especially for the soup kitchen, because it's, we don't have intensive intakes when we're trying to serve 350 people in an hour and a half. So I'm not sure if it were refugees or asylum seekers or immigrants or native Americans, but it's a very different population. Thank you.
Representative Gutti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, thank you for your testimony. Hearing your description about serious illness, mental illness, for some of the folks that stay in the shelters and lost their folks, doesn't the department have a developed protective services group and the ability, or maybe even an obligation, to step in and try to help these folks, their security guardianship over these folks? And why isn't that happening, Mark?
That's not as easy as it sounds to make happen. First of all, there's a lot of legal issues regarding that, and also, there's a lot of barriers to that, both, you know, within the system. You know, I tried to make clear, and I'm glad you asked, because I haven't said it here, but the issues we're faced with around untreated mental illness, that's not new, and I'm not going to point to just this current administration. This has been going on for decades, and our system has unraveled. But I can tell you, there are people, you would be astonished that we cannot get adult protective services in the timely manner that we think we should. And I think most Americans, most people in this state thinks there's a social compact for those kind of services for an 85-year-old person who's incompetent and mentally ill and in a wheelchair, and they say, "Oh, you can find that person a place to get out of the shelter." No, we can't.
But is part of that a resource issue? I mean, as we, later this week, as we have the Department of Defense, we'll have a committee to ask questions about that.
Priorities, absolutely.
So if we prioritize, if the state prioritizes helping these folks do the developed protective system, maybe something more can be done.
Absolutely.
And just one other really cute question. I was looking at the, I'm looking at the list of shelter resources, you know, the 42 shelters. So, looking at the list, it looks like outside of Portland, if you're heading up the coast in each, you have to go as far as Brunswick before you get to another homeless shelter, is that correct?
Brunswick, there's a shelter in Brunswick, there's a shelter in Rockford, there's Lewiston. They're spread around, but there are some vast areas where they actually...
If you're heading that towards York County, right towards the New Hampshire border, you have to go as far as Southport, is that, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Question. Representative Martin has one more for you. Mark, one more.
I have a question for you. Any idea what percentage of the people that we're observing in the facility over time are veterans?
I'm glad you asked. Three years ago, approximately 15% of the homeless population was made up of veterans. In the last three years, thanks to some significant changes in VA and support and tools and resources that are unprecedented, I'm glad to say we've got that number down to 4% to 6%. So, a good change, there's some good news.
And that's because of federal law?
Federal resources, yeah. The administration, the current administration in the White House stepping up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. FYI, we are on number 46 of 66, and 20 more. Leandra?
Hello, you seem welcome, Senator. Don't give discouraged, hang in your lines.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to testify against the diminution of GA for asylum seekers. My name is Leandre. I'm Brundian, I'm married and have four kids. In 2011, my family and I were forced to leave our home and flee our country to come to Portland, Maine. At that time, my wife was six months pregnant. In my home country, I was a lawyer and an activist defending human rights and project manager with lawyers without borders. I coordinated several projects, including one that focused on cases of serious human rights violations that would be referred to the International Criminal Court. I was also a human rights officer with the United Nations in the Black Office in Brundi for many years. I went through atrocities due to my occupation, including an attempted assassination, death threats, interrogation, and imprisonment that were conducted by the government, which considered me as an opponent. I feared our lives would continue to be in danger, so in August 2011, we left our home country and traveled to the US to seek asylum, with the hope to be protected and to start building a new life. The asylum has been granted to us in June 2014. Upon our arrival at the International Airport, Portland, we looked like a fish out of water when by chance I saw Brundian that I knew, who took us at his one bedroom apartment where we had to squeeze in the living room to sleep for one month. Meanwhile, he took me to the GA, where I have been granted food vouchers, but it took me one month to get an apartment that the GA provided me with and other life necessities. I had also to look for some information regarding schools. I had to be the shoulder every member of my family had to rely on, but in reality, we had all to rely on GA. What would we have become of us if the GA didn't help? Can you just imagine being homeless with a baby and three little kids? GA should not only be considered as a matter of policy, but also a matter of humanity. I left all behind me and came to the US with little. However, the assistance I received from GA was just temporary, as I was determined to build up a new life and give back to the community once the work authorization was granted to me. Therefore, just one week after I received it in 2013, I started working as a direct support professional, helping disabled people. Shortly after, I was hired at Preble Street as a team leader, supporting homeless women to help their needs met. Besides this gainful employment, like most asylum seekers, I volunteer in the community. Asylum seekers are not tourists. They are here because they experienced serious violations in their home country. They just need the temporary assistance to help them get back to their feet and to give back to the community. For God's sake and for fundamental human rights principles respect, please don't discriminate them. Let them keep receiving the temporary assistance from GA, thank you.
Thank you, Leandra. See no question. Thank you. Do you know me? I have no idea if I said your name correctly or not.
It's Dieter Ne.
Dieter?
Dieter Ne.
Dieter Ne?
Yeah.
That's close.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving me this time. My name is Dieter Ne, I'm from Brundi, and I came in May 2011, and in my, this is my second testimony, and before I left my country, I was a founder and coordinator of an nonprofit organization, International Training and Development Center, supporting the community for their livelihood, sustaining their small business income. And when I came here in May, I was involved in the Global Youth Anti-Corruption Network. It's a network for the World Department Institute, and I was an independent activist in the fight against corruption in the country. So, as a part of my involvement in the fight against corruption, I was, I've been targeted in different ways, and I wasn't feeling safe. I've been different countries in Africa, in Asia, but I felt that I helped to leave the country and seek any safety when I decided to come here in America. So, the general assistance, temporary support for me helped me to do different things, to help start a new life here in Maine, leaving me free, safe, without the worry of the situation I was in my country. And I joined Preble Street for the first time as a volunteer. I volunteered eight months, and then after I was given a rock fair, and I performed the rock fair for nine months, I was working in the food programs in the food pantry. And then after I got my program authorization, I started working with Ed and Bean, and after a month, I get a regular job with Preble Street, where I work as a community culture worker for homeless youth and immigrant youth who come to seek safety and just settle and start their new life here in Maine. I'm not trying to go through all my testimony, but what I need to say is that the time when I came here, when I started to receive the general assistance, it was very helpful to me. I had the time to prepare myself, I had the time to think about my professional experience, how I can put in the community to help other people. When I started to join Preble Street, working as a case worker, I'm now seeing the youths, the teenagers who come from this country. I know the situation they left in the country, and I know what they need here. They have no idea, they just need help. They don't think about the problems of finance or whatever, they just need help. So I'm thinking to myself, if we have nowhere to go to advocate and to seek help for this young folk like myself, I was a beneficiary of this assistance, I feel it to be unfair, and also, I can qualify as a kind of discrimination, and I don't feel it to be a human right at all. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just asked to consider to remain the general assistance, continue to help other people, as a beneficiary of this assistance.
Thank you. Paul?
Before this testimony, I was considering running for this office, but just changed my mind. Because I just realized that you have a tough job. You work long hours, you get, maybe you get paid more, I don't know.
It's better than you get.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Claude Roganje. I have been a resident of Portland, Maine since 1996, probably one of the oldest immigrants here in the room from away among these recent immigrants. I'm a founder and executive director of Community Financial Literacy, which we call CFL. CFL started in 2008 and has saved Maine refugees, asylum, immigrants, and low-income individuals in general with financial education services. We provide workshops on budgeting, credit savings, and one-on-one financial counseling and coaching. It has been a pleasure for me to have been videos and family, not only to understand the American financial system, but also to help them save money for the education of their future children. We understand how to balance the budget, and we share your concern when you are trying to control costs in the budget. On the other hand, a budget has two components, income and expenses. Mostly, people focus on the expenses because they want to understand if they can live within their means. However, there is also, people should think about where are the resources coming from to make the income that will support those expenses. As the economist Dr. Charles Cogan said two years ago at my organization annual celebration, he said, "Our survival in Maine will depend on how we embrace and integrate young immigrants who have chosen Maine as their home state." And he went, he continued to say that, the statistics shows that since between 2000 and 2010, every county in Maine gained non-white residents even when they lost white residents. And he said, "Immigrants who have come to Maine tend to be younger, between age 18 and 44, and over half of those have at least a bachelor degree or graduate degree." And I have seen those myself in my workshop when educating them. They're educated, you heard what they said, I don't want to repeat what they said. If I ask how many were here and how many of them had a bachelor degree or at least an associate degree, you'll find that's more than half, which really talks about what Cogan said here. I believe that these are assets that we should, we should take advantage of in Maine, in Maine's workforce to replace the state aging population. These young people, educated asylum seekers, should be looked at as resources, and the state should be bearing on how to accelerate their integration into the workforce instead of denying them assistance that send them to become homelessness. The general assistance support should be viewed as an investment, which will make a great return, not as a liability. Keep in mind that millions of dollars have come to the state from the federal government to support refugee and immigrants, and many citizens also are benefiting from this. We urge you to make a sound decision. I feel so bad to be in your shoes, because you are going to make a decision between a human being again and a decision to deny someone without knowing again where they're going to go tomorrow. I heard early when people say, or some of your colleagues asked a question, what is to the commissioner, what are the substitutes, what are you going to do for these people? I don't think the commissioner had an answer, and I don't think you have an answer either. But we cannot say that I'm going to deny, we say this in French, des a bien simple ou un bien simple. You take away one benefit from someone to give to somebody else. What are you trying to do for the other person? So think about that when you make a decision. This is a moral. I think when I came to the United States 18 years ago, I really, and I still believe that America is a welcome country, and Maine is a part of that. And then one of that, you can consider that. So we have chosen Maine as our home state, and we hope that this will continue, as we continue, all of us, to embrace the building of the economy. When I started Community Financial Literacy, I was alone in my backyard. But today, I want to ask one of the questions that was asked early. Today, I can testify that I'm also an entrepreneur with five staff, and all of us, not only my organization is paying payroll, but also we pay income tax. Can we be able to pay what the general assistance or other assistance have received? The answer is yes, we can. People should focus not only on liability, but they also should look at the assets that we are bringing to the state. Thank you very much. With that, I'll be happy to ask any question.
Thank you, Paul. I see no question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I really am going to have trouble with this next name. I'm assuming Eric Grattias? You're going to have to help me.
Good evening, honorable members of the Chinese, African, and Spanish and Chinese and African and human services. My name is Diogo Atresat-Sima, and I live at 871 Polissee, Apartment 5. I have been here seven months. I'm an asylum seeker from Brundi. I fled my country because of the violence and the war. I left behind my family in Brundi. My life was in danger, and I had no choice but to leave. I worked as a very successful businessman. I earned my income and sold furniture to the government. I hope I'll be able to work as soon as my work position gets approved. I am able to work, I hope to help my business. As asylum seekers is pretty, I learned the easiest general assistance to help pay my rent and food. Having general assistance is saving my life. I would not be able to survive without general assistance. Please do not take GA away.
Thank you. Senator Haskell.
Can you tell me how long your asylum case has been pending? How long have you waited for asylum?
I'm waiting on May.
May, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Sue Roach, I'm the Executive Director of the Immigrant Legal Advocacy Project. ILAP is Maine's only immigration legal aid organization. In 2014, our legal staff and volunteers helped over 2,500 immigrants in Maine, including 145 asylum seekers. And I'm here on behalf of ILAP to oppose the proposed budget cuts to immigrant benefits. And I just wanted to point out some statistics that came out, some data today from the Immigration Policy Center. In 2014, Maine had $120 million of net business income that was generated by immigrant businesses. And the purchasing power of the Latino and Asian communities alone was $928 million. So I'd encourage you to sort of weigh the long-term economic benefit that immigrants have in our community with the amount that's being spent on general assistance benefits for that safety net benefits they need while they're going through their lawful process. Cutting general assistance benefits will have a devastating impact on our clients who are following a lawful process established by federal statutes, regulations, and policies, and a treaty that the US has signed saying that we won't send back people who are going to be tortured or persecuted in their own countries. The immigration process is not simple. For example, I'll explain the legal process that someone has to go through to get asylum. An asylum seeker is someone who has to meet the United Nations definition of someone who has fled their country and has a well-founded fear of persecution on account of their race, religion, nationality, political opinion, or social group. Unlike refugees who flee in groups during a civil conflict and they get to a refugee camp where they're processed and resettled in the United States, they arrive here with legal status. An asylum seeker is usually playing based on a more individualized persecution. They don't have a refugee camp to go to. The US Embassy will not accept an application for asylum, so they have to get here with some other status, typically a visitor visa or a student visa. Once they get here, they have to go through a really complex asylum process. They have one year to apply for asylum, they're not given an attorney or an interpreter. Asylum law is complex, and having an attorney can really help you in your case. Government statistics show that 88% of those who apply on their own are denied in immigration court. ILAP is one of the few places in Maine for people to come for free legal assistance. We helped 145 people last year with 125 pro bono attorneys. We have a 97% approval rate. But we have a long waiting list. We can't help everybody. We know there's about over 1,000 asylum seekers in the Portland area, and we were only able to help 145. Clients are often waiting once to get an attorney. In these cases, they're time-intensive. It takes our attorneys over 100 hours to prepare a case. During that time, an applicant cannot get work authorization. After the asylum application is filed, they have to wait 180 days, and they may be waiting years for an interview, and then if they're not approved at the interview stage, they could go into immigration court, where right now, the Boston Immigration Court is scheduling hearings out into 2020. During those years when an asylum application is pending, the asylum seeker is considered lawfully present under the immigration laws. I have a citation in my written material, so I won't include that. But while they're here in lawful status, they're not allowed to work, and their only safety net is the general assistance. One other thing I do want to... One other thing I do want to just point out is that these immigration restrictions will also cause a real significant burden on city officials, who are now going to have to become sort of quasi-immigration officials. I can tell you, as an immigration attorney, it's very complicated to figure out. People have dozens of different types of immigration status, lots of different types of documents that show somebody's status. I've seen the document that the commissioner referred to that they have for staff to use to figure out immigration status. It's very outdated, it includes agencies and documents that no longer exist. It also misses many different types of immigration status. I think it's going to be a significant burden for city officials to try to figure out people's immigration status. So, for these reasons, I would urge you to not make these budget cuts. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Your chair, Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you know anything about the background? This is just, I guess, because I'm curious. Nobody's talked about why the federal government doesn't allow these people to work.
Well, it's in the statute, and I think the initial concern was that people would file for the asylum applications just so they could get work authorization. That was the reasoning behind Congress passing that law. So, there is a statute saying that for the first, you can't file your application until a hundred and fifty days, and then you can't work until a hundred and eighty days.
Representative Teane?
I've been curious about this for a while, never had somebody to ask this question for me, right, for me. Does the regulations right now, as for, as for the Department, require the people doing GA determinations in each municipality to determine the legal status of every person that applies for GA?
Right now, they don't have to. And I believe that if people have to be lawfully present, then they have to determine whether or not they fit under the federal, if they're going to align with the federal regulations, the federal regulations require people to have certain types of immigration status, so they would need to determine whether people fell into those categories. They would need to look at the documents to figure out.
And work.
Yes, I believe, if they're aligning with the federal guidelines.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Vicki Ryan?
I will be extremely brief, because for me, a long day, and you have my written testimony, but my name is Victoria Rand, I work with Community Housing with Maine and Portland. We have housing all throughout the state, and we provide advocacy, supportive housing, and community inclusion and stability for homeless and special needs populations across the state. This would include low-income homeless individuals with developmental disabilities, as has been also brought up today. So, we serve, house the whole gambit that's come up today. When we successfully house people, we inject stability into their lives so that they don't ricochet or work in services, and which causes great expense to society. There have been countless studies about that it costs less to house someone than for them to languish homelessness. I've attached them, linked to them in my written correspondence, but housing is out of reach financially for many people in Maine, and there are huge waiting lists for rental subsidies. As a safety net, GA fills that gap, allowing families and individuals access to secure housing so that they can make headway on stability and self-sufficiency. According to some data from the city of Portland, fifty percent of GA expenditures are for rent, sixty-four percent of households served each month receive rental assistance, and forty-nine percent of all households that receive GA receive it for six months or less in any given twelve-month period. Cutting GA reimbursement severely affects low-income individuals and families' ability to afford rent in their house, immediately putting them at risk of homelessness. Households will be unable to meet their basic needs, and thus unable to maintain their health and safety. Reducing the reimbursement rate for municipalities will drastically affect Portland, Bangor, and Lewiston, who would also see a disproportionate share of the homeless population. So, please take a look around Maine on the other side of the complex GA reimbursement formula. There are people who are falling on extremely hard times, and it's up to us to understand this and help them out, if that any first.
Thank you. See your questions. Reagan Lynch?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, committee members, you're taking the time, listening to all the testimonies, it's very enlightening. My name is Megan Lynch, I am a Bay State College student, and I also have lived in Scranton, Portland, so I've been a resident here all my life. Firstly, I would like to say that I'm here to oppose the budget proposals, elimination of TANF and general assistance for non-citizens. Firstly, the use of TANF and general assistance allocations to non-citizens is a rhetorical tactic that strategically targets asylum seekers. Asylum seekers are often portrayed as illegal aliens, and media and public policies have these depictions are erroneous. Over the summer, I worked at Catholic Charities Refugee and Immigration Services, the proud and refugee resettlement agency for the state of Maine. Through this organization, asylum seekers are welcomed at the airports, secured with lawful residency, and assisted with applying for asylum. Throughout the entire process, asylum seekers are in the state lawfully in every sense of the word. It has already been articulated about the past and present barriers faced by asylum seekers, and it would be absolutely incumbent to deny this immigrant group both the opportunity to work and access welfare simultaneously. However, we must recognize immigration as a necessity in the state of Maine. Our state, with an aging, dwindling, and immensely homogenous population, requires immigration from an economic standpoint. In two thousand eleven, of all Miners twenty-five years and older, thirty-four percent of the foreign-born population was reported to having a bachelor's degree, compared to only twenty-eight percent of the native-born population. Additionally, Lewiston's economic renaissance, characterized by a twelve percent decline in unemployment rates between nineteen eighty-nine and two thousand and one, occurred in the two years following the initial wave of Somali refugees and asylum seekers. If we want our population to stop decreasing and aging, we have to attract diverse groups with various skill sets to bolster our economy and make Maine thrive. From my own experience at Catholic Charities...